Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Lakewood City Council for this Monday, November four, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We appreciate seeing all of you here, both present in the audience as well as those watching from home on Zoom. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bowe.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Sella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in recognition of the sacrifices and service of our servicemen and women serving this great nation, both at home and abroad, and in recognition that tomorrow represents a wonderful day of citizenship and the privilege of voting in this great country, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, greetings, everyone. This is the week of Veterans' Day coming up. We have all sorts of veterans celebrations around the South Puget Sound, and we will do a proclamation recognizing November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four as Veterans' Day in just a moment. But first, we're honored today to have friends from the Nisqually Tribal Council and the Nisqually Tribe with us tonight to help us declare November, two thousand and twenty-four as Native American Heritage Month. And for this, I've asked our youth council members present Elijah Stana and Efrain Lopez to join me at the podium along with Hanford McLeod and members of the Nisqually Tribal Council to receive the proclamation and to honor us with their presence and a few generous words.
The City of Lakewood proclamation, whereas Washington State is home to twenty-nine federally recognized Indian tribes, and in Lakewood, the Nisqually and Silicon people were the first inhabitants of the land, using what was once a prairie as a ready source of food and a gathering place, and
and whereas Lakewood, sorry, whereas Lakewood is committed to supporting and strengthening government-to-government relationships with our tribal neighbors and recognizes the contributions of indigenous people are woven deeply into our rich trajectory and
whereas the city and the Nisqually Indian Tribe are engaged in a collaborative partnership to develop interpretive installations on public lands within the city that feature the unique culture and history of the Nisqually Indian Tribe and
whereas a project at Fort Silicon Park to add native art and cultural interpretive markers along the one point seven mile Nisqually Loop Trail that will include descriptions of traditional uses of the area, information about the Nisqually Tribe Chief Ashi's legacy and Lushu scene language and
whereas the city recognizes that we are on the lands of the Nisqually and Silicon people and acknowledges the history of this possession that allowed for the growth of our community and
whereas despite this history, indigenous peoples, the governments and their communities have persevered and flourished as teachers and scholars, scientists and doctors, writers and artists, business leaders and elected officials, heroes in uniform, and so much more, making immeasurable contributions to our country's progress and
whereas the city offers its respect to the Nisqually and Silicon people and their elders and reaffirms its commitment to preserve the traditions and culture of the tribes and to honor the unique heritage of our first inhabitants.
Thank you, gentlemen. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council does hereby proclaim November, two thousand and twenty-four as Native American Heritage Month here in the city of Lakewood, and we call upon all residents to commemorate this month with appropriate programs and activities. Proclaim this fourth day of November, two thousand and twenty-four, Lakewood City Council. Gentlemen, come on back up. I want to thank these young leaders for sharing in this proclamation tonight, and I certainly want to thank our our friends at the Nisqually Tribe for a history of cooperation and collaboration and partnership with the city of Lakewood, and we're very much looking forward to the work at Fort Silicon Park with our cultural connection and all the native wonderful historic monuments that we're going to work on together. So Hanford, if you want to come up and say a few words, thank you, sir, and then we'll take a picture when we're done.
Well, good evening. A week would I have from McLeod, representative from the Nisqually Tribal Council, and would say the government-to-government liaison. Let me just say, you know, good job to these young gentlemen here for not only saying that, but, you know, repeating the words that have been, you know, kind of spoken around the table here for quite some time. You know, this work, which I want to say and commend you guys and really raise my hands to, again, well-spoken, because, you know, we've we've put this together over the years. You are some of the first council that I've seen with this connection, and, you know, we've had this connection for quite some time. And that connection turns into a relationship, right, as the relationship we have to this this space, the area, and not only what's in the space, you know, as I'm talking to the Fort Silicon gentleman out here, and, you know, how we want to put together a few more events around this to celebrate friendship, right, or connectedness in that way, like my cedar hat that I love wearing every time I come into not only these meetings, but into these to these to these areas, because I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for my ancestors and the work they did to get us here. So again, thanking you for bringing our youth in to to really make that connection with us, you know, and I love that. I love I love how not only, you know, what we do here in the school, but what we're doing here at the at the level here with the city council. So thank you again.
Well, next, as I indicated, we will present a proclamation recognizing November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four as Veterans' Day and November, two thousand and twenty-four as Veterans Appreciation Month. And for this, I have my able assistant youth council members Elijah and Efrain, who will help present this proclamation to Colonel Gallo, commander of the Two-Two Striker Brigade Combat Team, and his sergeant major. So come on up to the dais and we'll present the proclamation, followed by a photograph. It will do the same thing. I'll start and then we'll just go. Okay. City of Lakewood is especially pleased and proud to present this proclamation recognizing November as Veterans' Month and in celebration of the upcoming Veterans' Day. Whereas members of the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, Space Force, Coast Guard, and Merchant Marine have answered a high calling to serve and have helped protect and secure the United States of America at every turn and
whereas US veterans answered the call when asked to protect our nation from some of the most brutal and ruthless tyrants, terrorists, and militaries the world has ever known, and our veterans did tall in the face of grave danger and enabled our nation to become the greatest force for freedom and
whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their courage and exemplary service and
and whereas we honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense and made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit and
whereas on Veterans' Day, we salute those who proudly wore the uniform of the United States of America and the families who sacrificed alongside them, and we affirm our sacred duty as citizens to express our enduring gratitude, both in words and in actions for the service and
whereas these brave men and women and their selfless sacrifices continue to inspire us today as we work to advance peace and extend freedom around the world and
and whereas as many veterans face overwhelming unknowns, through community collaborations, we can ensure that those who have served their nation receive the resources and support they deserve and
whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded provides a source of permanent inspiration to ensure our unwavering support as a community and
whereas though their commitment to freedom, our veterans have positively impacted millions of lives and made our country and the world more secure, and the city of Lakewood resolves that their sacrifices will always be remembered.
Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council, including its erstwhile youth council members, hereby proclaim November eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four as Veterans' Day and the month of November, two thousand and twenty-four as Veterans Appreciation Month here in the city of Lakewood, and we encourage all residents to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans and to actively support our local veterans, their businesses, and certainly their family members. Proclaim this fourth day of November, two thousand and twenty-four, the Lakewood City Council. Colonel, the floor is yours. We just want to say we are excited to be not only the community connector to the Two-Two Striker Brigade, but also the host city to Joint Base Lewis McCord, and as a third-generation veteran in my family, my grandfather, my father, and myself, I am proud to be here with you today.
Yes, sir. Thanks so much. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's a huge honor to be up here. So my name's Colonel Andy Gallo, as mentioned, and I command Two-Two Striker Brigade. Two-Two Striker Brigade has four thousand five hundred soldiers in it, and they're led by myself and commands our Major Ryan Boyd here. And we feel incredibly lucky and honored, because we're partnered with the city of Lakewood, and we just wanted to express our deep thanks to everything that you've done for our service members here at Joint Base Lewis McCord, but for military members worldwide. Just thank you so much. It's an honor to be here, and this means a real lot. Thank you.
I thought the Command Sergeant Major had an hour-long speech prepared, Colonel. Well, again, many thanks to our friends and representatives from the Two-Two Striker Brigade tonight. Thanks again, gentlemen, for coming. I also want to thank our youth council members Elijah and Efrain for their their ability to step up at the very last minute and take the heat, so to speak, to read proclamations in public. Not many people enjoy doing that, and I really appreciate you guys stepping up and doing it so well. So you represent you represent the council incredibly well, and now it's your opportunity to present your youth council report. And you got the school board director right behind you, so make sure it's very thorough and complete.
Good evening, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. My name is Efrain Lopez. I am a senior at Clover Park High School and a youth council member. Over the past month, the youth council has begun planning their two thousand and twenty-five Youth Empowerment Summit. The date will be Saturday, April twelfth, from eleven AM to three PM at Harrison Prep. This year's format will include a keynote speaker, council Q and A, a vendor resource fair, and interactive breakout sessions, fun prizes, and food. During tonight's meeting, we decided the breakout sessions will include methods for building college resume, like volunteer hours, etc., time management, turning your passion into a career, self-advocacy, college admissions, like preparing yourself from the start, financial management, savings, budgeting, and credit, sustainability, learning how to cook. Another aspect we're excited to include is a stress-free zone. In this dedicated area, students will be invited to work on a collaborative art piece, make slime, and learn how to distress using fidgets. And now I'll turn it over to my friend Elijah.
Good evening. My name is Elijah Stana, and I am a junior at Clover Park High School and hold the office of Youth Council Secretary. I also serve as a student liaison on the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board. During our October twenty-first meeting, Carrie Pedrick with Communities and Schools, and currently serves as a chair of the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board, presented us with the Lakewood's Promise SMART goals and asked us to value vote on which initiatives we'd like the board to begin working on this year. We agreed our priority goal is to provide opportunities for youth to learn important life skills. The specific plan will be to host two workshops in two thousand and twenty-five to teach youth essential skills for life and/or their future in partnership with existing youth. Our future goals include increase awareness of Lakewood's Five Promises to youth and get more community members, adults involved in supporting youth, specifically plan a communications campaign for two thousand and twenty-five to tell people about the Five Promises through examples and to move them to action by presenting community members with tangible ways that they can help by volunteering, mentoring, supporting youth events or programs. The Youth Program Collaboration Summit specifically hosts a collaboration summit in January, two thousand and twenty-five that brings together local youth-serving organizations to discuss ways to increase, improve, and enhance safe out-of-school spaces, support youth-led advocacy opportunities, partner with Pierce College or other partners to provide advocacy training to the youth council and/or existing youth programming, facilitate a youth slash city council policy roundtable in two thousand and twenty-five. This concludes our report, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Any questions? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your report, and I'm, you know, but I did I did I did have a question if you could care about the the goals regarding providing opportunities for you to do various things. How do you and we measure being successful at that? I mean, we can schedule events, but how do we know that those events are really the right ones that are making a difference? How do you envision envision being able to evaluate that after the fact to decide how to to do in the future?
Well, I think that the issue with that is that it's hard to measure success through students, but I feel like one of the ways that we can see that success
is seeing how well it impacts the youth of Lakewood and seeing what potential that we can bring from them. And whether it be through Lakewood Late Nights, the YMCA, or even through the youth summit, as long as we can maximize the potential that each student has within Lakewood, then I think we can hold something very successful for, for the Lakewood youth.
Again, I would encourage you in many of the areas in which you plan and are looking to make things better for youth in our community and to make this a good community for youth to, 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 to think about evaluating things so that we don't do just a series of one-time events and then don't make, have the basis to make a decision as to whether to perpetuate them or move on to new events. So, you know, I appreciate your work that's going in to, to, to all of this. You know, I just, you know, would like you to sort of look at the picture and, you know, in a little bigger sense for what was going to go on beyond your time on the youth council.
Hello, I'm Violet Johnson, and I go to Harrison Prep, and I've been on this, this youth council for four years. To answer your question, I think a big reason we even want to have this is because we communicate with the students in Lakewood, specifically in Lake High School, CP, and HB. A lot of it is having surveys and interacting with our peers to understand what they need. So the reason we brought this up, and we want to do that in our youth summit, was because we know that's something they need. So the first step, you know, this is our baby step, to make sure that they get that. So that is our beginning step towards that resource and giving youth that opportunity. But I do agree with what you're saying, and I think we really can do that by doing surveys. But to really measure the success, it'll be difficult because we're from seventh to 12th grade. And how do you measure success? Because there's so many different factors that influence students, you know?
And, and, and I'm saying is that sometimes difficult things are the things that are most worth doing.
Yes, yes. So we will take that into consideration. Absolutely. Doing surveys will do us some good, some goodness. Thank you for that question.
Any other questions? Well, again, we appreciate you coming and participating and celebrating not only Indigenous Peoples' Day, but certainly the Veterans Day weekend coming up, as well as Veterans Month that we proclaimed. And I think you learn a little bit more when you participate as you did tonight, so I appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we'll have the school district report, and for this, we'll have the board president, Alyssa Anderson Pearson. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. I am bringing some good news tonight. I'm feeling, feeling pretty good because it hasn't been the case, you know, through COVID. And we're on that, on the upward stretch, I feel. So the first thing is Clover Park High School received the School on the Rise Award. And the School on the Rise celebrates schools where students and adults collaborate to improve culture and amplify student voice. Clover Park was one of 21 schools in the state of Washington to receive the award. We also were awarded a $2 million grant for world language, which we're very excited about, especially in Clover Park, when there are a lot of different languages spoken. And before I get to my other good news, just as a note, we are really emphasizing and focusing on attendance. Attendance really dipped during the pandemic, and we're moving up, but it still is somewhat of an issue. We're doing, well, we, not we, the staff within the district is doing a lot to try to increase attendant, attendance. You know, a lot of folks got in their mind, when you're sick, stay home, and folks still have the mentality, which for the most part is true, but as Councilmember Pearson and I know, kids are sick all the time. Yeah, there's always a cold. We always say, how, what's the world record for having a runny nose? Because our children have that, and we cannot keep them home from school for the 180 days. So it really is determining, you know, getting out there and saying, you know, when do you stay home? When do you come to school? If you're not in the classroom learning, you're missing out. And so, you know, it just is getting the right mindset, connecting with parents, connecting with students, and just really encouraging the attendance. Also, if you received mail lately, you'll notice that our inside schools looks a little different. It used to be in a newspaper format, and we actually went to the National School Board Conference, and we were chatting about it, and we thought, maybe let's try a magazine format. When you think of the magazines that come out for Lakewood, and it just seems like people might be more inclined to read them. Sometimes the newspapers maybe look like the, you know, Safeway ads that came out, come out, and they might be more discarded into the trash can. So they look really nice, so take a look at them. It looks very professional. Our communications department is amazing. And on that point, our community relations and publications earned six state awards, including one perfect score for the 2023-2024 calendar. Our calendar is really cool. It has a lot of student art. It's, it's a very cool piece. So that's very exciting that we got a perfect score there. And then we also received an award of excellence for the Inside Schools publication, the Super School shout-outs on social media, and Learning in Motion video series. And then we got an award of merit for the replacement levy videos that were put out. So really great work there. I'm also happy to announce that our board was selected as a Board of Distinction this year, and we've really come a long way, okay? So I didn't think we'd see this for a while. It wasn't something that we had. You do have to put in your work and apply in a way, but we opted out of applying for a few years there. So we were like, let's get back into it. We're in a better groove now. Things are going great. So we were happy to hear that we received that, and it was for holistic success through focusing on equity, student growth, and the four pillars of student success. There was a big urge of what is success, which I know that Councilmember Brandstetter just mentioned that to the youth council. And wow, success looks different for any person you ask, you know? If you ask one person, it might be going to college, another person entering the military, another person going right into the workforce. So it really is capturing the whole child. What are they interested in, and what does success look like for them? And then one last piece of good news is the Office of the State Auditor put out a financial intelligence tool, and you might, might have been evaluated under it as well, because 2,166 governments in the state of Washington use this tool, including all 295 school districts. And it's to measure financial health and for transparency purposes. And it, there's various indicators of financial health. So I'm not going to bore you with all the details, but the indicators are government fund, governmental fund sustainability, are we living within our means, change of fund balance? Are we adding to our savings or depleting? Fund balance sufficiency, do we have enough cash on hand to operate? And debt service load, do we have enough revenues to pay our debt? And the measures are concerning, cautionary, and good. So red, yellow, and you're in the green. So for the 295 school districts in the state of Washington, 182 school districts landed in the concerning category, 45 in cautionary, and 68 in the good. And for the 15 Pierce County school districts, 12 landed in concerning, two landed in cautionary, and one landed in the good, and that was the Clover Park School District. So we have really, really focused on financial health, especially when we received all the additional funds during COVID. We knew that they were not going to last. They were limited, and we could not put any programs into place that lasted beyond what, you know, the timeframe of the money was. As you can see, a lot of school districts in this, within the state maybe took a different approach, which it was a difficult time. You were kind of throwing money at programs to try to make sure students were continuing to learn. But this is really good news. You know, we've been saying we were a fiscally conservative school district, and this proves it. So it's nice to see that from the auditor's office. And that concludes my report tonight, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
A great report. Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilmember Pearson. I hope they're pointed and difficult questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One topic really, so we get reports from you guys like on a monthly basis, and there's been discussion here in the council about potentially moving to a three meeting or some alternative schedule. And so maybe just seeing if you guys would be open to quarterly reports, and maybe we could get better attendance with quarterly reports than?
Yeah, I'm sure no one's going to be complaining about that probably, so maybe the city manager and superintendent could coordinate that maybe, but I'm open to that.
Very good. Any other questions? Exactly, exactly. Well, thank you very much for coming. Good to see you.
Thanks. Nice to see you. Have a good night.
Thank you. We're counting on the fact that the kids are not taking 180 days off of school this year, so. The next section of tonight's meeting is our public comment section. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the council electronically, and the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance outside of the six public hearings.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance of this evening's meeting from Tricia Parsons.
I think I saw something from Bob Warfield, but?
Bob Warfield's comments will be applied to the public testimony on the 2025 proposed properties.
Tax levy, that's correct. Thank you. So again, this is the public comment section of tonight's agenda. There are six different public hearings this evening that are on the agenda. If you'd like to provide testimony specific to those agenda items, I'd encourage you to do so under the specific public hearings portion of the agenda for that item. Members of the audience may comment on items pertaining to any matter related to city business under this public comment period. Again, preferably outside of those six public hearings that are agendized for tonight. Your comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that you state your name and residence for the record, and then proceed with your three minutes. Virtual comments are also appropriate here in the city of Lakewood. Live virtual public comment can be made by joining the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782, enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373, and then use the raise the hand feature to be called upon in due order. So tonight, I will call on those who have first raised their virtual hand to speak, followed by those who have signed in to speak. So we'll go with those who are here virtually first. I see one hand raised. Christina Manetti.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. This evening, I'm, I'm commenting on behalf of the Gary Oak Coalition. I'd like to bring the council's attention to several problems regarding the protection of Gary Oaks in the city. An update, so to, so to say. The city appears to be planning on cutting down at least one Gary Oak on the corner of 112th and Interlochen for sidewalks. And I just wanted to make sure that the city realizes that those Gary Oaks are part of the grove that, or stand, that spans both sides of Interlochen. The crowns pretty much touch. They do touch, or they are very closely approximated. According to WDFW, which is Best Available Science for Management of Gary Oaks, Gary Oak stands even of less than one acre in urban and urbanizing areas should be protected. And Gary Oaks west of the Cascades should be cut down only for stand enhancement. A sidewalk is not stand enhancement. WDFW also says, in its 2024 publication, that if they are cut down, oaks of over six inches in diameter at breast height should be mitigated by the planting of more oaks. For trees of between six and 12 inches in diameter, this would require the planting of 50 new oaks. Larger oaks require up to 250 more oaks to be planted as mitigation. Where will the city plant those 50 oaks? Developers are violating the city's code related to Gary Oak production during construction. This happened on Gravel Lake Drive at the corner of Stillcombe Boulevard, where cars and machinery piled up on top of the critical root zones of those oaks there, and also on Gravel Lake Drive, where the new oat, oat, sorry, oil change place is going in. The city has taken action, I believe. I understand that to be true. They've contacted the developers, and hopefully that'll be taken care of. But I think that the city has to make it clear to developers what they have to do to protect the critical root zones. There's supposed to be a fence. It's in the code. Things aren't supposed to be piled up in the critical root zone. So I don't think it's up to people like me or anybody else to be going around checking these things. So when inspectors are there, they should probably not only check about filling in grading and stuff like that, but also about whether the Gary Oaks are being protected properly. I think that is pretty much all I wanted to say. I just also want to remind about Ivy that is killing oaks all over the city and that we probably have to adjust the, the code to prevent that from happening, but that'll be for a different time. So thanks very much for, for listening, and have a good rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Next, James Dunlop.
Can you hear me? Okay, so you can hear me all right?
It's a little garbled, but go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Go ahead, and we'll see how it goes.
It might be not. If it's garbled, I won't, I won't, I'll, I'll, I'll sort it out. Okay, that's, I don't want to talk then if it's going to be garbled.
Okay.
It's okay. Okay, well, I said what I'm going to say. Okay, so when I was, was walking past Edgewater Park today, and I was just thinking, you know, it's pretty desolate at this time of year. And in fact, you know, that park is, is not really used very often, except at high summer, given my experience. It is just pretty empty, except June, July, or August. And in terms of Edgewater Park development, I just, I do wonder what is the point? I mean, I walked past Dr. Medjelud's former house, which has just been completely leveled, and there's nothing there, and I gather you're going to be putting a parking lot there, and you're going to be putting concrete down. And yeah, I do wonder what is the point and why? And it seems to me that, you know, part of the reason that the park is going to be developed is because there's potentially grant money available. And, you know, I was also thinking about the trees on Phillip, the oak, the oaks that were cut down on Phillips Road somewhere, quite a few, a few years ago. You know, the reason they were cut down was that there was a grant to make, make a sidewalk, and it couldn't be done on one side of the road for the conditions of the grant, so it had to be done on the other side. And so I'm just concerned that the city is just taking grant money without actually thinking whether it's actually useful to take grant money. I'm wondering whether taking grant money is actually of not benefit to the citizens of Lakewood and who is actually benefiting from grant money. And I, you know, there is a lot of academic research, you know, on bureaucracies and what bureaucracies are for, and that bureaucracies are, in a sense, there to sustain themselves. And I mean, it's not that any individual is, is at fault. Bureaucracies have emergent properties, and I'm just thinking that maybe the city of Lakewood and the bureaucracy of the city has this emergent property where it is trying to maximize its own revenue. And the grants themselves are used to perhaps support the bureaucracy in terms of increasing salaries, employing more people. But are they actually helping the people, actually helping the people of Lakewood? And I think the answer is no. And I think that there needs to be a, a, particularly among city council members who, 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 who. who remember themselves are part of bureaucracies, somehow need to detach themselves, because I think this is an issue that we need to think about, because I think this is potentially destroying Lakewood. And as I said, I argued before, Lakewood is a city that has, that has really been declining since its incorporation, I think, as that might sound. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I don't see any other virtual hands raised to address counsel during the public comment period. Do you?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, very good. I'll go to those who have signed to provide sort of in-person comment, if you will. The first is Eric Jurgensen.
Hi, my name's Eric Jurgensen. I live in Lakewood, and I've lived here over 20 years. I live here because it's a beautiful city. And I'm asking the council and Mayor Whalen to please protect the older trees that we have in this city. Once they're gone, they're gone forever. And unfortunately, there's a history, and I've watched it over these last 22, 23 years, of cutting down very old trees to do improvements in the town. I know we need sidewalks, but we have to consider ways to both have the sidewalks we need and keep the old trees. And specifically, I'm talking about Interlochen right now. We've already lost a beautiful old oak tree on Hipkins where that roundabout was put in. There was a sister Gary Oak, by the way. Ninety-eight percent of the Gary Oaks in Washington State are gone. And when they're gone, they're gone for good. You can't replace old trees. You can put new ones in, but there's no replacement for old trees. What I'm saying is, a tree was cut down on Hipkins that didn't need to be cut down. A slight change in the design of the roundabout would have saved the sister tree to the one that's on the north side of that roundabout. Simple design changes, and we can save these trees. Now, Interlochen is about to be improved. I'm glad a sidewalk's going in. A lot of people are glad it's going in. But you can have both the sidewalk and the trees. I'm going to give you a clue. You curve the sidewalk around the tree. And you can go around this town and other towns and see that that's done regularly. And trees do lift sidewalks. It's a thing. They do it with their roots. Takes about a decade, sometimes two decades. Modern technology has made grinders that in a matter of minutes can take care of that problem. So if your planners and your engineers, your traffic engineers, refuse to save trees because they don't want sidewalks to be lifted, I would just plead with you to try and show them a way of having both sidewalks and trees, particularly on Interlochen. It's coming up. There are 200-year-old trees along that road. Those aren't 100-year-old trees. They're 200-year-old trees. And when they're gone, they're gone for good. And don't just think about your own self. Think about your children and their children. When the old trees are gone, you'll never see them again. So I just plead with you to reconsider the 30 trees, which in the Tacoma News Tribune, in the article from October 31st, you'll, you can read that article about the Interlochen work that's being done there. You guys say there's 30 trees that need to be removed. You don't need to remove 30 trees. Please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is Mr. Mirjelini.
Hello, and good evening to the council and everybody else. My name is Abraham Mirjelili. I'm a resident of the city of Lakewood. Wanted to discuss the city's business regarding this interlocken, cutting those trees. Well, I do drive on Hipkins every day now. And when I look at that, I see really that rounder round was not needed. It could have been probably any issue you might have had. It could have been alleviated by putting maybe a light there. I hardly ever see anybody driving, coming from the road that they come into the interlocken there. I don't know what was the reason that they really put that rounder round, which really is not even leveled. And I know why it's not leveled. It's because it was intended to keep the tree. Of course, one of them is gone, as the gentleman mentioned. Cutting 30 trees, well, it's easy to say, but how many trees are you gonna put in their place in this city while they are gone? This is really why it makes the city unique in itself. That's something that it's, you know, when your keys, grand keys, they grow, walk on that street, they say, well, you know, my grandpa saw this tree. I know he saw it. I know my great-grandpa saw it. And when I see it, it's like I'm seeing him. I'm seeing my great-great-mother, among others. This is a part of me, and that's the way they see, and that's the way they protect their environment. It is not something that, you know, it'd be taken lightly. Yes, of course, I can, I can see that the council is trying to get where it was. There was a, there was a store downtown to make it a park. Well, that's one thing. But you also are speaking of building more houses in that area. Well, if you want to do that, at least do one of the other. Or if you want to make that a park, don't take other houses, you know, don't cut the trees and put warehouse in its place. So it makes really no sense. It's like waste of money. I thank you very much.
Thank you. That was the last individual who has signed up to address counsel during the public comment period in person. Anyone else in the audience wish to address counsel during the public comment period outside of the public hearings that are scheduled? Seeing none, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We'll now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of October 14th, 2024. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of October 21st, 2024. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $5,872,302.37 for the period of September 16th, 2024 through October 15th, 2024. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $3,378,016.81 for the period of September 16th, 2024 through October 15th, 2024. E, motion number 2024-71, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs for State Governmental Relations Services. F, motion number 2024-72, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Johnson Group for Federal Governmental Relations Services. G, motion number 2024-73, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Active Construction, Inc. in the amount of $5,272,272 for the Silicon Boulevard 87th to Weller project. H, motion number 2024-74, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement between Pierce County and the city of Lakewood for the provision of specialized law enforcement services. I, motion number 2024-75, confirming the appointment of Tim Lewis as municipal court judge and authorizing the execution of an agreement with Tim Lewis to fill the municipal court judge term ending December 31, 2025.
Thank you for that. Is there any manner on the consent agenda which any council member wishes to remove from consideration at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter and seconded by Councilmember Bell that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say no by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda, public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
And this is the date set for a public hearing on the utility tax rate increase.
Thank you. And for this, I'll call on our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus, for an overview.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. Before you is the public hearing on the utility tax rate increase. The 25 and 26 proposed biennial budget includes a utility tax rate increase on natural gas and electricity. Comparing the rates that we currently have at 5% with other jurisdictions that impose the utility tax, we're at the lower end. Most cities are doing a 6% utility tax. All of our other utility taxes based on 6%. In 23 and 24, the adopted budget included four positions, police officer positions, that were not funded. This utility tax increase essentially funds those positions in the 25 and 26 budget. The impact to the average homeowner of natural gas, that increase would be a dollar per month. On electricity, for Puget Sound Energy would be a $1.63 increase per month. Lakeview Light and Power, a $1.08 increase per month. This is scheduled for your November 18th council's meeting for adoption. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Kraus? And as indicated, the recommendation is to bring it from 5% to 6% or a 1% increase.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, very good. Well, this is the date set for the public hearing on the utility tax rate increase, as described by our deputy city manager. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted in advance by mail or email to the city clerk at 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, or via email at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Testimony received up to an hour before the meeting has been provided to the council electronically. And I'll have the clerk read the names of those who have submitted testimony in advance on this particular item, which is the public hearing on the utility tax rate increase.
Mayor Whalen, we received no testimony in advance of this evening's meeting.
Okay, very good. So we will now open it up to those who have signed in to speak. But again, virtual public testimony is also authorized. The instructions that I provided earlier apply here. So if you would like to provide virtual testimony, please use the raise the hand feature, and you'll be called upon in due order. Testimony is limited to three minutes and must be specific to the public hearing topic. If not, I will encourage you to save your comments to the next public hearing topic if it's more germane to that. But keep your comments, please, specific to the public hearing topic. First person to sign up is Mr. Mirjelini.
Hello, good evening again. My name is Abraham Mirjelili, resident of Lakewood. Tonight, you are going to have enough of me, some like it. Regarding the tax increase, my concern is that how the city could have operate with 5% tax, and now it can no longer operate. Even though there are, there is more uses of this natural gas, electricity, among others, and where this increase is going to be spent. If, if we are talking about just increasing taxes, but not really benefiting the city residents, and it is only increased just for the increase, I'm not sure if that's a wise idea. It should be, I'm not sure if this is going to be an investment in renewable sources of energy or not, or whatever else it might be. But just, I don't see any reason that why there should be increase, because the price of natural gas and electricity increases with the rate. So as there is more uses, as the price of the energy resources increases, so there is the amount of the tax. So if we keep increasing taxes on this, taxes on that, then we really are hurting our own residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others in the audience wish to provide public testimony for this public hearing on the utility tax rate increase? If not, I'll turn to those who may be appearing virtually. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
As such, I'll declare the public hearing on the utility tax rate increase closed. We'll now turn to the next one. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the 2025 property tax levy.
And again, for this, we'll call on our deputy city manager, Todd Kraus, to provide an overview.
So Washington state law requires that a public hearing be held on possible increases on the property tax. That public hearing is held this evening. The, by state law, the city is authorized to increase the property tax by the lesser of IPD or 1%. The IPD is over 1%. It's at 2.57. That means the city can increase the property tax levy by 1% as authorized by the state law. The impact to the average homeowner of a 1% increase compared to 2024 is $10.56. Comparing the 1% increase to the no increase scenario for the average homeowner, the increase is $3.63 per year, and that is on the city's portion of the property tax. The proposed property tax with the 1% increase, that levy rate is .68 cents. So it has come down from the 2024 rate of 71 cents per 1,000. And this 1% would generate, or is estimated to generate $8,88,000 for the city's general fund to support general fund operations. The next, the recommendation is for the city to, city council to enact the 1% property tax increase, and that is scheduled for city council consideration on November 18th. And that concludes my presentation.
Just a clarifying question, Ms. Kraus. You indicated, and I'm looking at page 145 of the packet, and maybe I misheard you, but you said the 1% increase would result in additional taxes of $8,88,000, which I think you meant that would be the overall increase. The actual change is 156,233, I believe.
Yes, that's correct. A 1% would generate the 8 million. Yes, thanks.
Overall, yeah, that would bring it up to 8 million from what it was in 2024, which was 7.9 million roughly.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions of Ms. Kraus? If not, this is the date set for the public hearing on the 2025 property tax levy. And again, public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Testimony may be submitted, as previously indicated, to the city clerk, both by mail or email. And the clerk will read the names of those who have submitted testimony in advance.
Mayor, the city council received written testimony in advance from Bob Warfield.
Thank you. Oral testimony is limited to three minutes per person and must be specific to the public hearing topic. Again, those who would like to provide public testimony virtually may do so by dialing the telephone number previously indicated with a meeting ID number and using the raise the hand feature. So turning to those who are physically present who have signed in first, Mr. Mirjelini.
Hello, my name is Abraham Mirjelili, resident of the city of Lakewood. Regarding the property tax levy, I think, I just spoke about some ways that really this, these taxes really makes it unjustifiable in this case. I'm not talking about our property, but I'm talking about how this could have been avoided. Our home, before it was destroyed, we, we were supposed to pay $16,000 in property taxes every year. Well, that's lost forever. Of course, it brings some additional expenses to the city to maintain that area, if ever does. Aside from that, I look at also the business that it was. the business that it was, used to be a quality QFC. Well, I don't know how much of a tax money is lost over there on that property when it's converted to be supposedly a park. Well, add them up, and you probably wouldn't be that much short of money that you have, would have saved, and you didn't have to increase anybody's taxes, probably. So really, it comes to think about that, what you want and where you want to go. If you look at these things, you will see that it really doesn't make sense. So many people, they say, well, don't destroy that house. That could have been benefited the most deserving kids in the city who were poor and are going to this clubber park. They cannot afford go to private. So I'm not against having taxes. Actually, I do, because it has to operate the city, but just destroying one and wasting it, then going and asking the people to pay for taxes, some of them, they cannot afford it. They really can't afford it. They are leaving paycheck to paycheck. We are in public, and they say it. So thank you very much for listening, and I hope you would not increase that, but rather would focus on how you could save the money and not to waste it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other individuals in the audience tonight who wish to provide testimony on the twenty-twenty-five property tax levy? Seeing none, I'll turn to those who may be present virtually. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Seeing no additional commenters, both virtually or either virtually or in person, I'll declare the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-five property tax levy closed. We now turn to the next matter. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the twenty-twenty-four year-end budget adjustment.
And we'll call on our Deputy City Manager, Todd Kraus, for an overview on this item.
This is the final proposed budget adjustment for year twenty-twenty-four, and it is the year-end budget adjustment. It incorporates items that the City Council previously approved, appropriates projects funded by grants and contributions, some additions to the capital projects, and then new allocations as appropriate. So the total budget adjustment is an increase of twelve point six million dollars in expenditures. Of that amount, three point one six million is for the general fund, and the remaining, roughly nine million dollars is for special revenue funds or, so for the special revenue funds for programs that are strictly using a special revenue source, and then as well as capital projects and such. Some of the increases in the expenditures include, and I'll cover general fund for the most part. The biggest items are increasing personnel costs for police departments, and these are all, I want to step back and say that they are all in alignment with what you had heard in the previous quarter's variance analysis when I presented the second quarter financial report. It's also in alignment with what you saw in the year-end estimates as we were working on the twenty-five and twenty-six budget adjustment. So that's probably the biggest one for the general fund, but it also took into consideration of some settled agreements, placement of positions, fully funding the police department. And then there were also some transfers that we had anticipated to close out and really clean up the books. We had funded some projects in twenty-five and twenty-six. So some of the funds that were fully funded are returning the monies back to the general fund, and that includes transfers from the Property Abatement Fund when we fronted monies for the Carwan Village abatement and such, and we've since received monies back. We funded projects in the Information Technology Fund, so there's no need to have those reserves sitting aside, since they're now fully funded. We have some excess monies from our debt service funds because we were prudent and paid off the debt service early and saved on interest earnings, so those can go into the general fund. We've captured a lot of the grants funded programs, such as the new permit system, which is fully funded by the grant. The Healthcare Authority grant for the choice is also fully funded. Caught the opioid revenues that are coming in as well, and then increased and decreased some of the revenues that we've seen have potential increases or have already realized their increases, but at the same time also reduce some revenues that we're not anticipating will reach the budget estimate. So this is scheduled to go back to the City Council for consideration and adoption on November eighteenth as well, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. This is the date set for the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-four year-end budget adjustment. As previously indicated, public testimony is accepted both by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. The Clerk will read the names of those who have submitted testimony on this matter in advance.
Mayor Whalen, the City Council received no testimony in advance of this evening's meeting.
Very good. Testimony is limited to three minutes per person and must be specific to the public hearing topic. After I call for those who are present, I will also call for any of those who'd like to provide virtual testimony. Those in present, those present include Mr. Mirjelini.
Hello, my name is Abraham Mirjelili. I'm a resident of City of Lakewood. Regarding the budget increase and adjustment, I want to know that where your attorney fees come from. Is it from this part of the budget? Or is it that's why you have to adjust, or is a part of it? Yeah, if anybody, if anybody, anyone in this council or a member of the cities could provide me with some information?
This is our chance to receive your testimony.
I understand, but I need to know, because that would be my next comment on it. I don't know if anyone can provide me with that information at this point. No?
Not during the public hearing.
Well, if, do you know, when I look at this, I, I can see that it's a good idea to have a dual-use residential and business structures, that it would generate some some excise tax, also property tax for, through the businesses, as well as for the residential area, while people, they could also afford to leave. I think that's a, that's a good idea, but I, what I cannot understand is that why they, they should be, in spite of generating these taxes, those developers should get a tax break on that. It, it actually makes no sense, because the city is generating taxes here and should not give them the taxes, should probably provide the people to maybe get a grant or somehow that either reduce the property taxes for the city residents, so they can, it can be more affordable to them, rather than increasing it, as we discussed it earlier. Or maybe give those who cannot afford it some, some grant to be able to live in the city, but not just to give it to the developer who already are rich. This is not right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the last individual who signed up to provide in-person testimony during the public hearing on the year-end twenty-twenty-four budget adjustment. Anyone else here in the audience? If not, I'll turn to those who may be appearing virtually. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. Then the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-four year-end budget adjustment is deemed closed. We now turn to the next matter. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six proposed biennial budget.
And for this, because we couldn't get along without her, again, Ms. Kraus.
So by Washington state law, we are required, the City Council is required to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six budget no later than December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. And as part of that project process, a public hearing is required. We've held a number of public, open public meetings, and I'll just go really quickly through that. The City Manager delivered the proposed budget on October seventh. On October ninth and October sixteenth, we had the Department Budget Presentations with the City Council. On October twenty-eighth, you heard the property tax levy and year-end budget adjustment at your study session. This evening, we have a handful of public hearings on the budget-related items. And then on November twelfth, we're scheduled to have a review of the proposed biennial budget. It'll be another opportunity for the City Council to hear or ask questions about the budget before adoption on October eighteenth. We'll also be reviewing the Human Services Funding Recommendations, the twenty-twenty-five lodging tax recommendations, and a review of the twenty-twenty-five fee schedule. So I want to disclose that as part of the November twelfth and November eighteenth scheduled for adoption, is there a change to the twenty-five and twenty-six proposed budget, and that includes increasing the business license revenues by a hundred and forty thousand each year. And as an offsetting expenditure, we do have, as the mayor mentioned, about making sure that we account for the appropriate salaries and benefits, as well as increasing our economic development efforts with those increase in the hundred and forty thousand in business license revenues. I've already talked about the utility tax rate increase, and that is already embedded in the twenty-five and twenty-six budget for funding the police officer positions that we previously had not funded. So overall, the total proposed budget is ninety-three thousand in ninety-three million, I'm sorry, in twenty-twenty-five, and including ending fund balance, that is a hundred and twenty million for all funds. In twenty-twenty-six, the expenditure budget proposed is one hundred and one million dollars, or a hundred and, about a hundred and thirty million with ending fund balance. The current proposed biennial budget is in compliance with the City Council's financial policies, ongoing revenue support, ongoing expenditures. One-time revenue sources are not funding ongoing operations. We're maintaining the twelve percent ending fund balance reserves in the general fund, and it's in alignment with the City Council's strategies. So, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Kraus? It does include the utility tax rate increase and the property tax levy rate increase, as you've previously discussed tonight, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Certainly, Councilmember Pearson, followed by Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kraus, can you, can you walk us through what the city has done in efforts to, to write the budget as far as, you know, efforts made to to, to break even before the need for a utility tax increase?
Yes, the City Manager has done a couple of things. So going back as far as the pandemic, he put a pause on spending, so discretionary spending was off, and put a pause on filling positions until we had a better idea of where we would, we would be during the pandemic. That actually worked out very well. We did not reduce services. We maintained our services. We just didn't do a lot of things, or we found options for ways to, for example, attend training virtually or take advantage of training that was offered through our Washington State, Washington City's Insurance Authority, for example. Well, as a result of that, there was a lot of one-time revenues that helped the city fund other programs. So for example, capital projects and such. So during the, I think it was the twenty-three and twenty-four mid-biennium, we had those excess funds that helped the city do things beyond operations. In twenty-twenty-four, the City Manager also put a pause on spending, similar to what he had done back in twenty-twenty-one as part of the pandemic. And again, you know, with the help of the department directors, everybody was very cautious in their spending and held back on what didn't, they did not need to spend. There was also a pause on hiring. So when positions became vacant, you really had to make a justification for why that position needed to be filled. So as you know from previous budgets, we have maintained our expenditures, and really the one thing that, you know, City Manager always says is cost containment and finding greater efficiencies. So all of the departments have done that. We're at the point now where we're at our very basics. If you look at the expenditures, you'll see that there's very, very little increases. And actually, departments went back to their budget and looked at cuts towards their operations, or even one time to get to where we are now, even with the proposed one percent property tax levy increase, which the City Council has done since two thousand and six. It also considers the business license fee increase as part of the balancing the budget, as well as the, did I already say, utility tax increase? So those things are already built into the budget, but we've taken measures, and I would say pretty consistent measures to try to balance the budget prior to getting into twenty-five and twenty-six.
Thank you. And then, so where we're at now is essentially, you know, with, with the budget is the utility tax rate or a number of, I've seen or heard, four police officer positions. That's kind of the, the decision we're grappling with essentially at this time?
Yes, that is correct.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen. Help me lead this circle. Earlier tonight, on the consent agenda, we passed approval of the bid on the Silicon Boulevard. And in there, there's a specific reference to, hey, this thing cost us more than we thought. So we're going to do a year-end budget adjustment in surface water management for X amount. Then I go on to page. So the reason I'm bringing it up in the budget discussion is, I would think it would be in twenty-twenty-five and not twenty-twenty-four, even though we passed that they really won't work on this project. So, but I don't see it in the twenty-twenty-four thing, and I don't see it in twenty-twenty-five, or I'm not seeing it. I guess is the proper way to say, is it in there?
Yeah, you're not missing anything. So the agenda bill that you reviewed might have said the twenty-twenty-four year-end budget adjustment, where it's actually not included in the twenty-four year-end budget adjustment. It'll go into the twenty-twenty-five year-end, or twenty-twenty-five carryforward budget adjustment. At that time, we'll be taking a look and working with the departments to determine what projects have been closed out. So completed project, try to determine how much money there is in savings overall, and then do a true-up of all of the capital projects. And that's consistent with what we have done in previous years. And you'll see that in the carryforward budget adjustment, the list of capital project requests for carryforward is going to be substantially greater than what you're seeing in here or in any other in-between budget adjustment.
When will we see that?
We'll close out the books. We typically close out the books at the end of, we get our last transactions from this day at the end of February. So as soon as that is done, we'll be right on, working on closing out the projects, because then there are grants still reimbursing at that time. We'll have a truer picture in April. So it's scheduled to come to the City Council in April to review.
But we don't have the amount budgeted right now.
We don't have the amounts budgeted right now, and actually, you know, they, coming now, it's November, is coming from a, I think the proposal is to come out of the Surface Water Management Fund. We'll still be reviewing all of the transfers or the components of the Surface Water Management at that time as well.
But what if you need the funds before then?
I don't think they'll need the funds before then.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, there is budget capacity, if there is. In any case, whether it's budgeted or not, if it is a true expense of the Surface Water Management Fund, which is an enterprise fund, we would definitely want to charge there first, rather than tap into general fund dollars because of these restrictions on the enterprise fund. We want to use the most restricted first.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Kraus, I wondered if you could just clarify two points. Is that, one is that we're going to be at our next meeting moving forward with the increase in the utility rates for natural gas and electricity. And that the, those rates affect customers of Puget Sound Energy and Lakeview Light and Power. And that they don't impact those that get their electricity from Tacoma Public Utilities. But that is in part because the folks with Tacoma Public Utilities are already paying a 6% tax, it's just defined a little bit differently because that's a public entity. But, but, but they're not going from five to six because they're already at six.
So to clarify, there is two components. There is the utility tax that is coming directly to the city for the providers that I had listed. So there were three, I think it was the natural gas, and then PSC and Lakeview Light and Power. The monies that you're referring to is through City of Tacoma, and they're based on a franchise fee. So this has, this is strictly just the utility tax, not the franchise fee portion.
And the, the, the last thing is that the 25, 26 biennial budget is, covers the period of time of when ARPA dollars have to be fully expended. And that the budget that we have before us to consider does that without losing any of the dollars, but also getting them all spent in time with the federal guidelines.
So the ARPA funds are not included in this budget. There is an assumption that it does have to be spent. Well, it's not an assumption, it's, it needs to be spent by 1231, 2026. But the ARPA monies are not treated as new dollars, so they're not in this proposed budget. They'll be treated similar to other grants, where any unspent funds will be carried over to the next biennium.
So when you spoke about there being 94 million dollars in the 2025 budget and 101 in the 2026 budget, that's exclusive of any remaining ARPA dollars that would be spent in those years?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Ms. Kraus. This is the date set for the public hearing on the 2025-2026 Proposed Biennial Budget. Testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment as previously provided. The clerk will read the names of those who have submitted written testimony in advance.
Mayor Whalen, the city council has received no written testimony in advance of this public hearing.
Very good. Those who have signed in to provide public testimony on this topic, the 2025-26 Proposed Biennial Budget, include Mr. Mirjelini.
Hello, everyone. My name is Abraham Mirjelili. I'm a resident of City of Lakewood. Regarding this, now it's a little bit more clear to me that it seems like there is not just one increase, but multiple increase as a part of this budget. When I was reading the voting pamphlet for 2023 during August, I noticed that it was stated that 20 city employees were let go, and the salary of those who were there was increased by 50%. I can hear also here that there has been some freeze on hiring. Well, is there any freeze on those who got 50% raise if they have got it? I don't know about that. That's one. Two, during the last session, there was approval of issuing a permit for people who have rentals. Well, that's an additional also money that the city is going to get. However, I don't think if that's a good idea. Why? Because these permits are usually, or it's, it's going to be passed to their renters. No property owner is going to print money and hand it to the city as taxes, and then have their tenants basically paying them less. I really think that's a bad idea, and really, it only brings more bureaucracy to the city. So I can see that everything is talked about tonight is about how to increase taxes here and increase that taxes and like that. Really, the focus should be that how it could be better save the taxes which is there and better utilize it, and also have less bureaucracy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others in the audience who wish to provide testimony during the public hearing on the 2025-26 Proposed Biennial Budget? Seeing none physically in the audience, Madam Clerk, any appearing virtually who would like to provide testimony?
Mayor, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. I'll declare this public hearing closed. We now turn to the next public hearing matter. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on the 2025 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendment Docket.
Thank you. And for this, I'll call on our planning manager, Ms. Tiffany Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This was a topic at a recent study session at which you discussed a total of 10, 11 planning commission amendments that were recommended by the planning commission, I should say. And then in addition, there was a 12th proposed amendment recommended by the city. If you'll recall at that discussion, there was a question regarding whether three of the amendments would be included in tonight's hearing because of the opinion of the council at the time, after considering those initially. We went ahead and included those in tonight's hearing because they had been advertised as something that would be testimony taken on, and just to be taking an abundance of caution. But in summary, the information starts on page 197 of your packet. There are a number of these amendments that relate specifically to things required by state law. The ones that were suggested by several that came from a planning commission member, numbers nine and 10 are actually not recommended by the city. And then the, excuse me, the last amendment that is not in the planning commission recommendation, but has come to you from the city directly, is to engage internally in a market study for downtown, preparing for the 2025 Regional Center Review by the Puget Sound Regional Council. And with that step aside for the hearing, thank you.
And before you do, as I recall, our meeting the last time, even though it's, it's noticed and it's on the docket for the public hearing, I think item eight was one that council did not recommend moving forward to the planning commission after the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, it was items eight, nine, and 10 that the council discussed about that process last week. Yes.
Very good. Thank you. This is the date for the public hearing on the 2025 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendment Docket. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. The clerk will read the names of those who have submitted written testimony in advance of this public hearing.
Mayor Whalen, the city council received no written testimony in advance of this public hearing.
Very good. We do have individuals signed up to provide public testimony during the public hearing tonight on this matter. Testimony is limited to three minutes per person and must be specific to the public hearing topic. We ask that you state your name and residence for the record, and then you'll be provided your three minutes on this topic. The first individual is Walter Neary.
Walter Neary, citizen of Lakewood. Nice to see you all. Thank you for your service to the city. I thought I'd come bearing compliments, just to be a little disorienting. First thing, I just want to say that just as someone who's trying to follow all this, the proposals that we're seeing on the docket are really going to help us sort something out. And by us, you may get it, but in terms of the citizens, I think a lot of us are trying to figure out what's required by state lawmakers, what's required by state government, what's required by regional entities, market forces, and the city of Lakewood itself. And it sounds like there's going to be a lot of clarity come out of these discussions about middle housing and parking and everything else. So I compliment you on kind of kicking the ball down the field and allowing us to get some clarity on who's responsible for what. The second thing, maybe I missed it, it's totally possible, but just having sat in on some of these sessions, I've definitely heard some of you say that you really think some of the housing development should be attractive. And the thing that I haven't heard is kind of chasing that to the next level. And I'm getting a vibe that we're, the council might be thinking, or some people might be thinking, well, we want our development to be more attractive, so therefore it'll happen. But it doesn't work that way. You really need to build design review and that into the system. Because it's only fair to developers that they know in advance how attractive you want development to be. And I basically really wanted to put a stake in '08. The one thing I liked about '08 was that it was really clear, the name of suggesting that we wanted to get rid of small business and replace it with housing. So if you're not going to advance that, I think that's fantastic. But I encourage you to apply the same reasoning to what we're seeing with the multifamily tax exemption, which I know is not the subject of the hearing. My compliment is that this one at least had an honest label, the multifamily tax exempting. It doesn't say, hey, get rid of small business and replace it with housing. And I, I just appreciate that you might not be advancing that. And I hope you'll consider preserving not just housing, but also small business, because it's really important to the community. So, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Next is Kevin Green.
Yeah, good evening. Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, my name is Kevin Green, a resident of Tacoma. Following up on previous comments that myself and Josh Friedman have made on behalf of LRI, Lemay, and Waste Connections, the district manager for those companies here locally. As local operators for Waste Connections, LRI and Lemay Family Companies provide garbage recycling and composting services in the city of Lakewood, its homes, and its employers. The city council, the planning commission, the city staff team have been working hard to prepare for and support job growth and housing in Lakewood. And at the same time, LRI, Lemay, and Waste Connections Family Companies are also committed to making sure garbage recycling, composting services, and as a community can be key pace with that growth. We greatly appreciate the good partnership we've built with the city's professional staff for these purposes. To continue the progress that this partnership has made toward ensuring that the waste needs of new housing and employment can be fully met, we ask and recommend that you approve the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket that the city's professional staff have been hard, have been hard at work preparing. Together with the docket's other critical items, our requested docket item will allow the city's staff to evaluate and study the possibility of reinstating the industrial land use and zoning designation on the eastern half of our existing sales road site. And then additionally, as mentioned in the docket, this amendment would reestablish the split zoning on our parcel that had been in place until 2019. So I, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Mirjelini.
Hello again. My name is Abraham Mirjelili. I'm a resident of City of Lakewood. Regarding this comprehensive plan, my concern is that when I was watching what it was going on a few weeks ago, when they were discussing it, I found that they were talking about taking blocks or half a blocks of property owned by different private property owner and turning it to the affordable housing unit. Well, my concern is that if those property owners are going to be treated the same way we have been, and they be offered penny for a dollar if, and lose their property, and what happens to them even after that? And are they going to have a place to leave with the way they are compensated? So really, my concern is for the people who already own their property, but they are going to lose it. And I'm not sure if they are going to be properly compensated or not. That's one. Two, the developers who are, who want to have an easy ride, I believe they should be expected to invest in that. Not to be after only profiting from this, but also contributing to their own communities. When I say about their, their own community, that means they come from this community primarily, hopefully. So, but they be competitive. They build it up. I, I look at this also that, as I mentioned, they were asking, well, we are going to have other private property owners, a small, like family-owned, one unit, having a permit. That makes it very unfair to those people, because a big business has one permit with 50 units of rental property versus one person who has only one unit. And really, this brings the power and more money to the people who are more, they are better off, not to the common people. And really, you are representing the common people, not the elite. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any others in the audience who wish to provide testimony during the public hearing on the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Docket? Seeing none in the audience, Madam Clerk, do we have any who are appearing virtually?
Christina Manetti.
Very good. Ms. Manetti?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
A concern to me is 2025 '08, which, if you're not advancing this one, that's good news. It's related to the conversion of underutilized commercial buildings to housing. It's problematic for a number of reasons. Such a policy would, for example, erode the city's relationship with its small businesses, especially those with roots here. They're an integral part of Lakewood and give it some of its local color, making it a nicer place to live. I can imagine that many of these properties would be seen as underutilized spaces. Such a policy would also, it could also have in its sights some of Lakewood's few historical buildings, depending on how conversion is defined. And Lakewood professes to value its historical buildings. Affected could well be the Clover Park Shops, which date back to at least 1946, home to Lakewood's own period soda fountain. Imagine how important it was to the kids at Clover Park High School across the street in 1950s. Wouldn't it be great to restore that complex rather than destroy it for affordable housing? There are also Little White Shops to the north, as well as the former Key Antiques Building, where a few years ago, nine of the 16 protected Gary Oaks were cut down, having been part of a stand that constituted a critical area in violation of GMA. These buildings constitute one of Lakewood's local centers, intrinsic to the neighborhood comprised of the quaint, heavily forested residential streets from 111th to Wilder. The comp plan has said that the city is to maintain the character of established neighborhoods, and the city professes to value its historical buildings. Finally, that stretch of Lakewood, the stretch of Bradley Lake Drive is probably the most major, excuse me, the most important major thoroughfare lined with Gary Oaks. Our city's official tree afforded special considerations in the state of Washington. Large Gary Oaks, which WDFW instructs can be considered critical areas individually in urban and urbanizing contexts, would be also adversely impacted by further development in that area. As per GMA, the city should not experience a net loss in critical areas. According to WDFW, which is the best available science in this area, Gary Oaks are not to be cut down west of the Cascades except for stand enhancement. Existing pavement should instead be removed. Destroying these historic shops and Gary Oaks would degrade the quality of life in Lakewood even further, especially for the residents of that neighborhood, as well as diminish all residents' aesthetic enjoyment of their city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other virtual commenters to provide testimony? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good. Then I'll declare the public hearing on the 2025 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendment Docket closed. Now turn to the last, but not least, matter set for public hearing tonight. Madam Clerk?
This is the date set for a public hearing on the 2024 Development Regulation Updates.
Very good. And for this, we'll have our planning manager Tiffany Spear and Assistant Director Angie Silva.
Thank you once again, Mr. Mayor, Tiffany Spear. There's a total of four issues, and I'm going to walk through three of them, and then Ms. Silva will come up and speak to the fourth. But the 2024 Annual Development Regulations include updating the deadline for when the city has to provide its annual zoning and development regulation package to the county assessor treasurer. assessor treasurer. Currently, it's at June 30th, it's going to be changed, or excuse me, July 31st, it's going to change to October 31st. And then items two and three are to reinsert regulations that were unintentionally either partially or completely removed during the 2019 rewrite of Lakewood Municipal Code Title 18. So this is to replace or reinsert the regulations governing camping and recreational vehicle parks, and then to update and reinsert partially the chapter regarding manufactured mobile home parks regulation. Both of those have been reviewed against current state law and updated because of a few changes that were needed. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor Moss, and council members. As part of this public hearing tonight is also proposed code amendments as relates to Second Substitute Bill 5290. As of last week, we did a substantive dive during your study session on the proposed amendments itself, specifically to Title 18A in three different chapters, as relates to noticing requirements, notice of completion or incomplete, notice of decision, performance requirements, as well as review timelines specifically. This bill, Senate Bill 5290, went into effect in 2023 with exception to two efforts that go into effect in 2025. As relates to performance reporting, our first performance report is due in March of 2025, which will look at, back at 2024 to establish a baseline. Also, what goes into effect is new permit review timelines, which go into effect January 1st of 2025. Those new review permit timelines specifically address permit types 1 through 3, specifically type 1, if it does not require a public hearing or notice. We have 65 calendar days to issue a decision after a complete application. A complete application can be approval, approval with conditions, or denial. On a type 2 decision, that would be 100 calendar days after application completeness and get to that decision point. A type 2 would require a public notice, for example, a notice of application, but also a CIPA determination as well, but does not require a public hearing. And third, type 3, which is our largest, that requires both a public notice as well as a public hearing, would be a decision calendar date of 107 day days from application completeness to that decision point. With that said, sir, I did not do a deeper dive as we did last week on our study session on Monday, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Silva, this matter? Councilmember Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that as, as this action moves forward and that it is approved to adjust this to where we have the type 1, type 2 things and the new guidelines to do that, that projects that are already in some way in, in the works, that a vested project that has got a proposal, proposal that is going under our current rules wouldn't necessarily transition into the type 1, type 2, type 3, if that would be a change?
That is correct. At the time of application completeness, it's application best to the variety of the codes that are applicable to that project at that submission time, sir.
Okay, so, and that would include some items that would then have longer timelines than the, the goal of the new ordinances, but are we going to work to strive to still meet the new guidelines even for completing vested applications?
Right. Currently, state law has 120 days for land use and environmental permits. That changes based on the type 1 through 3 that we discussed previously. With that said, an application vested would be vested to those, the code at that time, so those timelines. In addition to, as we discussed at the study session, even though there are certain application types that would be exempted from those timelines as authorized by state law, does not mean the city would establish review goal targets consistent with those timelines and strive to get out the door with a decision to advance housing economic as well as environmental protection provisions.
So, and currently, when we receive applications for permits for plots and to build things to do that, and then there is a notice published on the city's website to be able to go and do that. And typically, it, those notices talk about what kind of CIPA process is going to be used. But going forward, would those notices also include whether this application is being considered a type 1, 2, or 3, and, and something like that to be able to provide some clarity to the public about exactly what is the situation with a different particular application?
Fair question. The proposed code amendments do not change the State Environmental Policy Act provisions for what local governments consider as an optional DNS process. So DNS is a determination of non-significance, so one of the three thresholds that could be triggered as part of environmental review. What state law allows is that optional process can be incorporated as part of your notice of application comment period. If the city selects to incorporate that into a project proposal, we must notify in that notice of application, we are selecting the optional DNS process based on the proposal that has been submitted thus far, and this may be the only public comment opportunity to comment on that particular proposal. So again, in short, nothing in the proposal changes the State Environmental Policy Act in that consideration.
Okay, but I guess my main concern is, is that in the notices to the public and not, I'm not talking about to the applicant, but I'm talking to the people in the public out there. There are people who read the yellow signs and, and other things. Will that clearly say whether this is going to be in a type 3 approval process with a, with a hearing examiner involved, or a type 2 process that's going to be approved at a, at a, at a, at administrator level? Or, or a type 1 that we're just going to move it through? And, 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 and that, that's not a distinction that is made in our current template for, 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 for notices, and I think that that is the, one of the values we can gain from doing this in terms of gaining a, an element of transparency as we move in this direction. And I, and I do appreciate that you're being very clear about what the new process would look like, and also what it would do to make, to enhance the city's programs. Thank you.
We can certainly look at improvements to our notice of application process identifying the decision type. Just a friendly reminder, those NOAs do cite other applications that are part of the project proposal, oftentimes that they're submitted roughly at the same time, and they may be a different type. It might be a type 2 or a type 3, depending on the scale and scope of that proposed development. So we're happy to look in that, sir.
Any other questions? We certainly hope this provides good consistency and clarity for the development community. Well, thank you. This is the date set for the public hearing on the 2024 Development Regulation Updates. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment as previously indicated. A clerk will read the names of any of those who have submitted written testimony in advance.
Mayor, the city council received no testimony in advance of this evening's public hearing.
Very good. So those who have signed in to provide testimony include Dr. Mirzalini.
Hello, and good evening to you all. My name is Abraham Yurjalili, resident of the city of Lakewood. Well, my concern is not just the regulation and bureaucracy, it is also how it's applied. Is it going to be any favoritism? Is it going to be any cronyism? Is it going to be any racism when that's applied? I say this not because of what we have went through, but also because I know someone who actually tried to rebuild a burnt building in this city with his own money, to have a business that it could produce taxes for this city. Spent nearly half a million dollar and seven years of his life, and he abandoned it. He didn't even own that property, belonged to some minorities who agreed he to rebuild it for them. So there is a regulation, and then there is implementation of the regulation. I don't know about the whole thing. I never wanted to know about it because it's really very discomforting, but I know others that they get permit left and right quickly, they build and gone. And, and my hope is that this council will look at that, that when there is a regulation, first, it would be simple. Second, it would follow through with it and would make sure that every resident of this city is treated equally. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is the last individual that I see who has signed in on the sheet to address or provide testimony rather for the public hearing on the 2024 Development Regulation Updates. Madam Clerk, do we have any folks appearing virtually to provide testimony on the 2024 Development Regulation Updates?
Mayor Whalen, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. That concludes tonight's six public hearings on various topics. We now turn to ordinances. Ordinance number 815, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 815, vacating that section of Klein Road lying between Interstate 5 and Pacific Highway Southwest.
Thank you. For this, I'll call on our city engineer, Mr. Westonott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Two slides that thank you, that are essentially the same as what's in your packet. The first one, just as a reminder, is where we're located, what we're talking about this evening, Klein Road. It's on page 454 in your packet. You'll see a slide on the screen above. Things that are important to note on its location, that the south end of it is right up against I-5, a limited access roadway. So it's essentially a dead-end road. The packet, council packet is very exhaustive in all the information to date. The next slide I have is essentially what's in, on page 450. And the proposed vacation meets all the requirements of the city code. This is a dead-end street that's been fenced off for many years. The applicant intends to remove that fence, open this access again if the vacation is approved. We, there's still the ability for utilities to be in the right-of-way, and it still is open and maintained as access. The petitioner is the one that's responsible for paying for the vacation. The, the opponents to the vacation, while they make up about 20% of the fronting owners, would still have the rights adjacent to their property, but they would not pay. The tribal lands, Medicine Creek Enterprise Corporation abutting Klein Road would not have any effect to their access. And the city does not use this piece of right-of-way at this time, and we don't have any projects planned for that area. And finally, the adjoining private owners would be the ones for responsible, would be responsible for the maintenance, instead of the city being responsible for that maintenance. And again, it's a fenced-off road right-of-way that is unused currently. Is there any questions for me at this time?
Certainly. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question, so the, if the right-of-way is vacated, the, the property rights stay with it, that they would still be accessing utility rights accompanying the, the whole 30 feet? And would that be only on, you know, half of it? Or does anyone who adjoin it get access to the whole 30 feet?
No. That's correct. So the utilities would have their current franchise access or franchise right to be in that 30-foot of right-of-way. Any new utilities, franchise utilities could also go in there, and it would be used for access. The difference, it would be a private access, but again, it would be access that would be available to the adjoining owners.
Okay. And then, thank you, my second question. So if folks are given the opportunity to buy it, I, I guess, do they each, you know, if you're splitting it 15 feet and 15 feet, does, does each property owner adjoining have the opportunity to, to purchase that portion? Or as part of this, there's already people that don't want to purchase it, so the other two people are going to purchase and somehow split up whoever owns which part, pieces of it? Or is it all one parcel? I'm, I don't.
So what it does is it lifts, so, so the, the property itself is, one way to look at it, is owned by the adjacent owner out to the center of the roadway. The city essentially has an easement for city right-of-way uses over that 30 feet. The payment is only by the applicant, and they make up about 80% of the fronting owners. The 20% that have been opposed, while they would have those rights, or the city rights lifted off that fronting property, it costs them nothing.
And so they, so the, the parcel, the tribal property and the little, the little one that is ends in 2042, so those ones would just have their properties expanded, and they would own that 15 feet?
Yeah, so in that 15 feet in front of the Bella I-5 Motors and the Medicine, Medicine Creek Enterprises, the 15 feet fronting those properties, the city's uses as right-of-way would be lifted off it. So they could use it for access easement, or access if they so choose, and if they need utilities brought in, they could be brought in through that 15-foot area that aren't currently there, or if they need maintained. Or they could expand their structure.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And that's page 447 that we're referring to as a nice chart in the packet. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen. Question on the two property owners who are opposing this. The, their properties will expand in size, they will then take on the responsibility to maintain that section, those 15 feet, as well as pay an increased property tax because their property has expanded as well, correct? Conceivably?
I believe that's correct, but I did not calculate, you know, the area they currently pay property tax on, but I believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Bokey.
So I want to dovetail on to the remarks, the, the questions that Councilmember Pearson had, he said, tribal lands abutting Klein Road will not have their rights of access affected by this vacation. So I think the representative that showed up here two weeks ago, or whenever that was, I don't know if they said this publicly, but I, in concert with the owner of the smaller property who's, who also spoke or a representative is.
Mr. Amos.
Yeah. They have plans, the, the tribe has plans to purchase his property. They've already purchased a property across the street, that's public record. So with the 15 feet that they would theoretically own between those two, those two small parcels, plus property they have, and presumably as part of this, the, the tribe is talking about some kind of redevelopment of that parcel that we don't know anything about, I guess. Or do we?
So we don't have any application into the city at this time. As far as the ownership goes, I As far as the ownership goes, I don't know the answer, at least according to the assessor. It's still owned by Mr. Amos. I may have his first, maybe referring to him by his first name, not his last. But again, it's it's fifteen feet and they wouldn't be able to build upon it, but they could use it for access. Cause it still has to be pre and clear for utilities to come through.
Yeah, I think in the plan that, or or the objection from the tribal representative. It looked like they wanted to drive on it, right? And they would still be able to do that. They would be able to make improvements to it. And they would own that property, correct?
Well, they would, yes, they would have the city's right of way easement lifted off it, so they would have the right to. Continue to travel over it.
Okay, but they could not build on it.
Yeah, they could not build on it. Same with all the other adjoining owners.
And they, and and the entire street now is only thirty feet wide. There's no, it, there's not a sixty foot right of way in there.
That is correct. There was extensive research done that shows Jack Klein Road was only thirty feet wide. And we do have that information available if necessary, some of it's in the packet, but yeah, so they're splitting fifteen feet on either side.
So it was a little country road at one time.
Correct. You have in the aerial in nineteen forty-five, I can't tell exact what the surfacing is, but it appears to be a gravel road. So because you have packed highway to the north and then the river attracts the north and there's not a lot to the south, so that road. It's basically just been used as access by adjoining property owners.
Okay, thank you. A quick question for you based upon the packet. It looks like. On page, if we can turn to page four sixty, which is part of the appraisal. Four sixty shows a depiction of the quote unquote subject property southerly view. So that is the the current roughly approximate look of the roadway.
So I'm going by memory on that. I don't have that picture printed out in front of me, but I know which one you're talking about.
It's a mess and looks overgrown.
Yes, exactly. And it's it's been in this condition for some time fenced off and. The city's doing what we can to keep it from becoming a nuisance, but. In its current use, yes, it's fenced off. It's unsightly. It's not used where the proponents are looking to utilize this again for the adjoining businesses.
And as best you know, the the plan is for the adjacent owners, the applicants here to. Remove the fencing and actually improve this, so it's providing some circulation where their adjoining properties are hoteliers.
Yes, that's that is correct. So remove that and essentially expand access to their parking lots.
Very good. Uh, Councilmember Branstadter.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. The timelines of what would happen, should we approve this ordinance? If we were to approve the ordinance, then the applicant. And I assume all the property owners would be notified that we have done so, that. The the applicant is responsible for writing us a check for ninety-five thousand dollars. And then at that time. There is something submitted to the county to adjust the property lines of the four parcels.
So the applicant has, I believe it's one hundred and twenty days for that payment and ninety-five thousand. I know that page is in the packet. I can't put my fingers on it this moment.
Okay, but it, but it's. He pays us, then it goes to the county to to adjust the property records.
That's correct.
Okay, and would go forward and 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 any discussions about. The ninety-five thousand between amongst the four applicants are their responsibility to do that, but 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 that the. The property gets divided up as in your, in your, in your map, where even the applicant gets half of Klein Road adjacent to his property. The other others get half of Klein Road adjacent to theirs. And 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 that's not really the city's. We're we're not a player in 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 doing that. That's done by the the assessor at the county.
Yes, I believe that's correct. I haven't done that personally, but it would be recorded. I don't know if Jeff, if you want to add anything on that. Yeah. Yeah, it would just be an updated recording.
Okay, and then. What happens if the ninety-five thousand dollars doesn't show up?
I believe it's one, they have one hundred and twenty days to make that payment, so.
And if it's the hundred and twenty days goes by and they and and we haven't received the ninety-five thousand, then we're just back to the current status quo.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yes, I believe that's section four, the proposed ordinance. The vacation is effective upon payment to the city. Within the hundred and twenty days, so. Ain't nothing for free, as they say. You gotta pay to play. Any other questions of Mr. Ott? Uh, very good. Have you heard any other information from either folks who objected at the hearing, not the hearing, but the. Actually, it was at the hearing the last time. Any other comments, any written submissions?
No, no further comment and the city did reach out to Medicine Creek and no response.
Very good. Okay, well, thank you very much for the overview. Do we have a motion to adopt ordinance eight one five?
So moved?
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Pearson, second by Councilmember Branstadter, that we adopt ordinance number eight one five. Any further discussion? Councilmember Laura Sella.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I questioned our city staff on this, so. If we were to pass this, it's going to place the financial burden on folks who were opposing taking this vacation, right? Because they're gonna now have to maintain a section that they didn't have to before because it was part of the cities. As well as their increase in property value is gonna then also increase their property tax. Something which they are not consenting to. So for that reason, I think I will be opposing this and hoping that they come back with another proposal for a partial vacation. Thank you.
Very good. Any other comments? Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So some of the comments that we heard from the tribe was they wanted to keep it to act, to use access. And it's apparent here that this vacation maintains both. Utility and right, you know. Not right of way access, but vehicle access to to the properties. And there's really, this doesn't provide any value to the city. We're not gonna do any improvements. It's already, you know, just been sitting here forever. If anything, it's a, it's a burden to the city. It, you know, there could be liability that comes from this parcel or this this right of way. There's really nothing for us here. I I think that. It's pretty clear in my opinion to vacate it and let the the property owners figure out how best to use it. And it sounds like the the hotel folks, you know, have all intentions of kind of making this a main access and. You know, we'll see if their landscapers, you know, clean up the the front little bit of it for them, so we'll see.
Councilmember Branstadter.
At. You know, this is the second time the vacation of this. Somebody has come before us during my time on the council. That, you know, this time the situation is a little bit clearer. It has always been that this is a piece of right of way that. There is no value to the city. We've been, you know, it's one of those things that we've just been ignoring, maintaining. And so we have some responsibility for the fact that it is in some ways become a nuisance. That I think that the. The impact to the. The tribal entity that is looking to become the owner of two of the parcels or that. You know, they 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 are looking to be able to plan that, that there will, they they will get fifteen feet of right of way that they can. Pave to be able to use for vehicle access or they can use it for. For anything else that they would want to look to to go forward. The previous time that this wasn't approved, it was. The car dealer there was able to make some specific cases. About how the way that his business was oriented and awkward there that 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 losing that. Fifteen feet as opposed where where we're right now, he was, he had thirty feet there. You know, you know, made sense and and the. The action ended up between the discussion amongst folks getting withdrawn. We actually didn't vote to disapprove it. It just got withdrawn to do that. But there is no point in the city retaining. What is in fact a liability to be able to do that, that the the type of. Activity that has been going on has been been described to us. Are things that could result in some kind of liability? And in some of the ordinances that we've enacted regarding. What's allowable or how we would enforce certain types of behavior on public property. Right now, we would have to enforce it on that property. And so it's better to get it off of our books and let it become public property where then there are, there are other perhaps more defined ways. For property owners to deal with the behavior described. So I'm going to be voting in favor of the vacation.
Very good. Any further? Discussion? Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick follow up. I I fully agree that that space is a public nuisance and is not an asset to the city. It's more of a liability. That said, I don't think it's fair to force that liability on someone else that doesn't want it. And independent of the reason that they don't want it, just on principle. I don't think it's fair to hand it off to them. Again, that's why I'll be voting now. Thank you.
Okay. Here's here's my two cents on it. As Mr. Branstadter indicated, I think this this topic of the Klein Road vacation has come up at least once, if not twice. In our tenure here, I remember Mr. Buhr working feverishly to try to get rid of this, probably ten or twelve years ago. And looking at the options. When last we. Dealt with this a week or so ago, there was some discussion of the use by either the tribal entity. And or the other owners there with the car dealership. I have since learned, and it hasn't been confirmed, but this is what I have heard. Is that the tribal entity is going to be purchasing the car dealership property. And working with those folks to relocate. That's what I've heard. In terms of. Burdening them, assuming that wasn't the case, it's my understanding that upon vacation, the. Hoteliers are, as the applicants are paying the ninety-five thousand in fair market value to the city. And those other two adjoining property owners basically get their half of the fifteen feet for free. So they're certainly not getting burdened by any acquisition cost. Down the road, may they pay an increase in property tax for their portion of the property? Certainly. Would they have a maintenance obligation? Yes. But from their testimony, they indicated they wanted to use that property for their own uses. So whether that comes to fruition or not. I personally don't see it as a detriment. I see it as a benefit to those two parcels. So. Well, the tribe would not if they put it into trust. Right? So the tribal entity would likely put it into trust with the BIA and then they wouldn't be paying property tax. So the city would lose a little bit. That that doesn't. Bother me one way or the other. I'm more focused on getting rid of a liability for the city. Encouraging good private development adjacent to this. Unopened right of way, if you will. It's unopened because we saw the picture on page four sixty. It looks like a mess. So it's gonna look better than that and it gets rid of it. So I'm in favor of the vacation. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands raised. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance number eight one five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nick.
Ordinance number eight one five has been adopted. We now turn to any unfinished or new business? Mr. Coffield?
Not this evening, Mayor.
Very good. And so you have the floor. Reports by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. Just a few updates for you. Wanted to let you know that the shelter enclosure for the Tenzel Log was delivered last week. It's about a month. Or so behind schedule, just quite frankly, supply chain issues that we continue to experience in certain areas, and this was one of them. But now that we have the enclosure, site prep will begin this week and weather dependent will pour the concrete. And get the get the underlying foundation for for that area squared away. And then we'll have the fence specialist, which will come in over the next couple of months to do the enclosure and and all of that. So it's expected to be fully completed by the first part, early part of two thousand twenty-five. Also, the city of Lakewood, we're one of, I think, just a good number of cities, receives an opportunity to receive a, what's called the two thousand twenty-four Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant. And our dollar amount was a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Quite frankly, we were having a very, very difficult time finding a way to utilize the federal monies. Because a lot of the work that that the monies could be used for, we had already done or had been underway in. However, our planning manager Tiffany Spear did find an opportunity where we can utilize these monies, and that's to supplement some state grants. That have been awarded in our work in support of our energy and climate change resiliency work, which is a requirement as part of last year's House Bill eleven eighty-one that passed. So we're gonna continue to lever leverage those dollars and then help buy down our internal costs that we have in support of that. So kind of a win-win there. Also on the grand fund, I learned late last week that the police department is the recipient of a ten thousand dollar grant. That's awarded by the KESHA Community Foundation, which is part of a local, actually statewide credit union, their local heroes grant program. And the funding is going to be dedicated to creating space for both peer support and wellness for our police officers. And so some of the monies are going to be used to update some of the outdated gym equipment that's over in the police department. And some, some, some other activities along along those lines. I do want to recognize and congratulate. One of our investigators, investigator Matt Lightgeb, who led this effort to be able to secure these funds. And I know we're in the process of doing a news release in partnership with the credit union on that. And then my last update just has to do with your calendar and this this coming Thursday, you have your SSMCP Elected Officials Council, which is down at Eagles Fried Golf Course. And then this weekend on the ninth and tenth from eight to two P M. In partnership with Waste Connections, we have our Fall Community Cleanup, which will be down at their transfer station off of Ninety Fourth Street Southwest. Still looking for some volunteers. If members of the council, if you're interested, let it, let us know, please. And then a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, on November twelfth, United Way is hosting their annual Poverty to Possibility Summit. Which is a half day event down at the Hotel Murano in Tacoma, if you're interested in attending that. And then a week from Wednesday on November thirteenth at six P M is Desserts in the Driveway Event over at Springbrook Connections in the Springbrook Neighborhood. So kind of close it out through 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 November and then the next big date after that is is Thanksgiving. So with that, Mayor, that's my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Coffield. I'm pleased to hear about the shelter enclosure for the Tenzel Log. So when I ran by there this weekend, the holes that were dug for the footings looked like you could lose a Kia in each one of them. So it must be a pretty large shelter structure. Huge?
Well, it's not huge, but it's it's good size. I'd also like to further mention there's, we did create a webpage to outline some of the work that's being done down.
Got it, yeah. Good engineering work must be because it's like four feet by four feet deep.
Well, you know, you start big and then you do your. Well, you know, you start big and then you do your work on the hole, and then you fill it in.
Yeah, there you go. I'm glad there there's an engineer on board somewhere. That's great. Uh, any questions of Mr. Coffield on his report? Great. We'll turn to council comments. Mr. Bokey, you look like you're 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 dying to make your comments tonight.
Just overly excited, uh, big week. So uh, Friday, last Friday morning was the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Meeting, and there was a number of items on the agenda. Um, the big presentation of the day was uh, there's, you know, encouragement by the state legislature for churches now to use their properties, because there's a lot of churches. And so we received a presentation. Currently, there are, I believe, six churches in all in Tacoma um, that are in the process of putting some kind of housing on their properties. Shiloh Baptist, sixty units. Greater Christ Temple, sixty six units. Bethlehem Baptist, forty two units. First Christian Church, which is in West Tacoma, which already has a uh, tiny house village on it. Uh, will probably be breaking ground sometime next year. That's forty two units. I don't know, Sixon Orchard. And the big one now is in the Proctor District Mason United Methodist Church, which owns something like a city block or something close to it. Um, for a church much smaller, and they're just in the and and they're just in the phase of just really trying to figure it out. Um, so the the main thing was if we have anybody like that, we should just really send them to shape, who will then help them find people to kind of guide them through the process of of doing this, because there's a lot in a lot involved. And so that that took a a lot of the meeting. Um, we talked about the budget. I think we know the budget numbers for next year. I'm hoping that the city has been told what the budget numbers. I think there's a slight increase um, in the amounts. Um, and that's it for that. And Planning Commission meeting on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday. Uh, action on the locally initiated Shoreline Master Plan Update, updating city energy and climate change implementation plan and action plan. And then um, some other items, so. There you go. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I want to uh, remind folks to get out and vote. It is uh, that time of year, and it's our chance to have our voices heard. Uh, and it's our civic duty to do so. So I encourage everyone to get out there. Uh, I appreciated the youth council participation in our proclamations today. I think that's a good habit that we should get into in the future. Uh, it really helps us pull our our youth in and make them a a part of what we do. So I thought that was really good. Um, I was impressed with the school district report, uh, with the awards they've gotten for financial health, being the only uh, only school district in the county that is rated green. That was pretty good. Um, I also want to, as we talk about schools, with daylight savings time, it's getting dark earlier now, so encourage folks to take some extra time when they're driving, to be careful of kids who are out there as they're getting out of school. On our uh, public hearings tonight, uh, I'm just gonna touch on a couple of them. On the utility taxes, uh, I think it's great that we are leveling the playing field between uh, Tacoma Power and Lakeview Light and Power and Puget Sound Energy. While I recognize it's not a a utility tax for TPU, it is a non-compete fee that's six percent, so it's it's very similar. Um, on the property tax levy, uh, I know we're limited to increasing it by one percent a year, which does not keep pace with inflation, which has been about two point three percent every year for the past ten years. So we're far behind where uh, where we could be uh, in terms of costs uh, due to inflation. Uh, on the comp plan zoning amendments, uh, I think it was item number eight that we uh, talked about last week about not putting forward. I I want to be clear that we're not saying uh, that we don't want to have mixed use spaces, right? Because I think that's important that we find ways to do that uh, in areas that it's appropriate. Um, so keep that in mind. Uh, and then finally, the um, presentation uh, on or that included uh, new timelines as standards for our permit processing. I think that is something that is good to get out in the public and to hold ourselves accountable for going forward. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I'm planning to um, uh, attend the South Sound Military Community Partnership Breakfast on Thursday. And on Sunday, I'll spend some time checking ID and talking with residents at the uh, uh, as I bring their trash over to the pickup point to be able to go and do that. Um, and I and I did want to say that, you know, going into the uh, South Sound Military Community Partnership thing over there, that he uh, the uh, the op ed that was written by um, um, General Collins and 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 Mr. Zeke and published broadly across the state. Um, cer- certainly it resonates with things that we as a council have been advocating for 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 a long time, and 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 that goes back to the creation of the Military Community Partnership. But I certainly hope that it signals the fact that 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 there maybe is going to be uh, some actual action in Olympia to begin to systematize the 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 support for for the military installations in the state, including uh, and including and 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 actually highlighted by support for JBLM to be able to go and do that. Uh, and the last thing that I guess that I would would mention is that we are um, approaching the end of the year, and that shortly, the the youth council will be making a recommendation to the mayor or a student for us to recommend to the A W C Quality Communities scholarship at the state level. And that the in 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 terms of our of our efforts, so we have been uh, uh, where we have annually been supporting a scholarship in conjunction with the Lions Club. The Lions Club has budgeted three hundred and seventy five dollars for half of a thing, and that we actually have our share this year is actually two hundred and eighty dollars, because there was some we over contributed last year, and so we had some rollover dollars to do that. But to the extent that any of you want to contribute to the next scholarship to be awarded to uh, the someone in two thousand twenty five, uh, if if any of the remaining meetings that we have this year, if you want to give me your donation, I'll get it combined with with that, so that 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 scholarship becomes available. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And those donations, you need by when? Just to confirm the scholarship donations? Preferably.
Preferably, I'd like to do it by the end of the year, so that we've just sort of got the money in the bank, so that then when we when we when you designate and who 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 is going to be, you know, the uh, the uh, the uh, the last two scholarship recipients are both attending in U W in the in in Seattle. Uh, and interestingly, they were they they both have been active this summer in events at Fort Silicon Park uh, with us to be able to uh, go and do that. And the recipient before that has been uh, I haven't heard heard from her, but she has been at Columbia University, and I haven't seen her name in the paper.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Pearson.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Bell, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's nice to be back. Um, just catching up, but I will be attending the SSMCP breakfast on Thursday, so I'm looking forward to that. That will be uh, very enlightening and I'm always and I just was looking at the op ed piece, so I find it really timely and interesting. So that's looking, that's a great thing. And um, I really like the presentations from the youth council tonight and incorporating them with the proclamations. I just thought that was really special, and I agree with Councilmember Laura Sella that I think it's something we should we should incorporate a little bit more.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Actually, I did it because I was anxious to get some help with them. I couldn't get it from any of you people, so I had to get the the youth, the leadership of the future. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, well, I will just add on to that. Um, I do attend the Promise Board Meeting, and that's when the youth council talk about the things that they want to see happen. And they have like two or three different groups that have sections that they actually write about. And one of the things that they talk about a lot is getting more involved.
Okay.
And I think tonight was an opportunity to show that we would like to have them more involved. So good, good job on that. Uh, I will be attending SSMCP meeting on Thursday. I also have the Promise Board Meeting on Thursday. I have LMCC Board Meeting on Thursday, so there gonna be some quick turnarounds. So other than that, let's see. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Very good. Well, thank you. So this last week, we had a meeting with Congresswoman Strickland, the city manager, myself, and Mr. Remack and Mr. Podziewinski to thank the Congresswoman for her contributions to the South Tacoma Way Project, the Green Street Loop Project, and certainly the LASSA uh, project for affordable housing in the town center. And we were able to provide her some very nice diagrams and uh, certainly give her a heads up on where the project is. She wants to certainly be here when we break ground and and loves the stories. So the more that we can provide stories that federal funds are being put to good and active use, the more likely it is that we can continue to make uh, positive requests for additional funding for construction, for instance. So it was a good meeting and time well spent. And we'll be at the SSMCP meeting on Thursday of this week. Uh, and tomorrow, as Councilmember Laura Sella indicated, is the opportunity, actually, it should be a privilege uh, for all of us to exercise our rights and citizenship responsibilities to vote. Uh, the uh, manager of the Town Center Starbucks, just right around over here, has in- indicated she wanted me to tell you all and to invite folks. They're doing kind of a uh, thanks for your vote, uh, Election Day coffee. So it's like, I think it's free coffee tomorrow from seven thirty A M. to like nine. They've got shirts, and they're just celebrating the opportunity to exercise our citizenship responsibilities by voting, and they're gonna give you a cup of coffee for doing so. So stop by if you can. She's very excited about trying to do more to make Starbucks a a player, if you will, in all civic opportunities here in Lakewood. So she's a good person. And then, let's see, Saturday, um, in my other capacity, I'm going to be attending the Auburn Veterans Day Celebration. It's the fifty ninth annual parade that will have over two hundred units and over five thousand parade participants. Allegedly, it's the uh, largest parade uh, of its kind, or one of the largest parades of its kind in the United States. So if you're inclined to look for a good opportunity to celebrate Veterans Day and do all things veterans, well, come on up north to the fair city of Auburn. And that is all I have. Any other alibis for the good of the order? If not, thank you, or adjourn.